Through all of them. So now, we're going to move on to public hearings, item G, and the Safe Parking, Safe Shelter Pilot Program and Shelter Crisis Ordinance. Take a staff report.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Chairman Boncio and members of the Commission. My name's Michael Richardson and I'm joined here with tonight with Mary Milner and she's going to present a PowerPoint for you explaining what we're proposing with this new safe parking emergency shelter ordinance. Mary, take it away, please.
Good evening, Commissioners and members of the public. Unfortunately, my camera is not working, but hopefully my screen chair will work. So, do we have my screen?
Yes.
Yeah.
Can you make it full screen? We're only seeing, we're seeing the screen, but with your surrounding PowerPoint.
Okay.
There you go.
That's perfect.
Thank you.
So tonight, we are, we want to share our safe parking and safe shelter ordinance. This is part of our 2019 housing element work that we've been doing. The implement, this implementation measure commits us to adopting an ordinance or resolution that creates a safe parking pilot program, program longer, along with later implementation steps. One of the things we learned in examining best practices on this kind of program is that it's almost, that successful programs are almost a, almost always a coordinated effort among agencies, community organizations, and neighbors. So that's the approach we took. The program that we have developed was made in coordination with Department of Environmental, or Department of Health and Human Services, other agencies, local service providers, and experts in homeless services, as well as the public. The impetus behind this whole thing is the population of houseless people in Humboldt County. And this is measured by these, by annual point in time count, last one was done in 2019. So this map shows basically, on the left, it's the count of people on the night of the point in time count. Those are people that were interviewed. On the right, we have an additional set of people that were not interviewed, but they were observed dwelling in vehicles, RVs, tents, or makeshift shelters. So what the point in time tells us is that about 1,400 people sleep in places that are not made for human habitation on any given night. About one of the, one-third of those are outside of city limits in unincorporated areas. And almost half sleep in cars, vans, or makeshift shelters. So a little bit about our program, our pilot program. I want to introduce. Having a little problem with my slides here, sorry. So there are two pilot types that we're introducing here. One is safe parking and one is safe shelter. I want to make clear what those are. Safe parking accommodates vehicles, vans, RVs, as determined by the service provider. And just an aside, the provider is going to be a government agency, a nonprofit, or a religious entity. Safe shelter, on the other hand, uses non-vehicle type shelters, which are individual cabins, tents, sheds, huts, and these would have to meet certain building, emergency housing building standards. Now, in addition to the two pilot types, in order to help and guide the providers who will be running these things, in coordination with DHHS, we've come up with three management plans. And what these are is different ways to run your, run the programs. And the reason there are three is because their providers will have different amounts of resources, different staff. Some will be grant funded, and obviously, they'll have different locations. Some may be in very rural areas, some might be by urban areas. So just, I'll go into more detail about what those management plans are later on the bottom of your screen. They're called minimal requirements, the village model, and the low man, low barrier management plan. So before going too much further, I wanted to just quickly go through some pictures, some images, so that, to give an understanding of what these things look like in other places. This one's in Santa Barbara. This is a safe parking, minimal requirements model. The Santa Barbara operation has been going on for almost 20 years, and when people want to know how to do what the best practices are, this is the, the organization they go to. In fact, the Santa Barbara New Beginnings has written a best practices manual on how to do the safe parking. This is what the ones in Eugene look like. They're called rest stops. They're minimal requirements, which is overnight shelter. This one's been going on for quite a while, too. Here's an Arcata example from 2020. This would qualify as a low barrier navigation center, which I'll define when we get down to the management plans. And here's one in Long Beach that also is a navigation center. The feature of a navigation center is that it has sort of maximum services. There's caseworkers, there would be referrals, lots of onsite services, and these are for, they're basically service-intensive versions of safe parking. Here's a picture of one in Yuba County, on the safe shelter side. And then the third model is called the village model. This is very much like transitional housing, but not quite. It's more, it's an emergency shelter that's, takes on some of the aspects of transitional So, we, state law has a fairly hefty presence in regulating emergency shelters. What we are allowed to regulate is this short list here. Basically, we can quantify the maximum number of beds, sufficient parking, waiting in client intake areas onsite, we can require onsite management, the proximity to other shelters, length of stay, and lighting and security. So, the general condition in this same housing, State Housing Law Act, requires that any standards that we put in have to be objective, and they have to encourage and facilitate the development of emergency shelters. And as an overlay to this, in a separate piece of legislation, the Housing Accountability Act limits the reasons for which we can deny or make infeasible an emergency shelter. And that would require, there's a list again of reasons that you can deny a project there, that requires written find, written findings, certain written, specific written findings. So, this is actually my last slide. I seem to have missed a few. If you'll forgive me, I'm going to go backwards a few pages and see if I can find the ones that I've lost. I'm not sure if they got out of order, or what. There are a couple of other things I wanted to cover. You know, okay, sorry, late slideshow preparation. I'll just kind of ad lib here. We'll go to my fun slide and I'll just add there. So, one other thing I wanted to mention is where these are located. This is a question everybody asks. The program, the pilot program that we're presenting tonight does not include proposed sites, but rather, it specifies the zones where safe parking and safe shelter are permitted. The safe parking, safe shelter pilot is a type of emergency shelter, so the zones where they're permitted are the same zones where emergency shelter is permitted. And that would be the C1, 2, and 3 zones, commercial zones, light industrial ML, multifamily zone. These are the five zones that have been in effect basically for the last 10 years, and no, yet no emergency shelters have been built in that time. So clearly, there are other barriers. Our proposed ordinance tries to add, proposes to add a couple of other locations for these things. One is MU, mixed use, which will be kind of a minimal effect, but one other, we presented as an alternative in the ordinance, you'll notice, alternative to. It would be, alternative to involves allowing churches, existing churches, to have one of these sites on their property outside of the zones named. So that'd be a small, a handful of other possible locations. The one caveat that we put in the alternative is that the existing church must have a verified congregation of 20 persons. And that'll be something for yourselves and the board to consider, that alternative, too. So, I'm going to go back a little bit to the management plans and just kind of fill in. So, let me just give you a little more detail on the, what the three management plans do. The minimum, well, let me just say first in general that the cost and complexity of these plans is, increases from left to right on that, on this table in the bottom of the slide. In other words, the lowest cost, simplest ones are the minimal requirements, and the most complicated, most expensive are the low barrier. The reason for three plans is we want to maximize the number of possible providers that can do these, and also to reach the outlying areas of the county, which right now have no shelter coverage whatsoever. If you remember the map we looked at back a few slides, you'll notice that the, the population of houseless people is spread throughout the entire county. It's not all in the populated areas, but as of right now, there's only five, there are five shelters, and only one of them is in the unincorporated area, and that shelter is right next to the city limits of Arcata. So we have essentially no coverage, no shelter coverage in the, in most of the county. So that's the reason for three plans, to catch more people, to bring more people in. So minimal requirements model, let me just give you a little detail on that. This is an overnight-only plan with minimal services. The cost is kept low by less staff, because it's only open overnight hours. Regulation is a lot less than in other models. One thing I didn't mention is that besides the land use regulations, there are reams of other regulations from DHHS and other grant funding entities that have, that these shelters have to comply with. And those, the regulations themselves are actually a barrier to making these things. It makes it more expensive, you need more staff. So the idea of the minimal requirements is to reduce that burden, so that there's a better possibility for these things to happen. What we're hoping is, for the minimal requirements, we're hoping that it can be a little easier to stand up than other ones. It should be portable to rural areas, and it can be tailored to available resources, and it would be suitable for small providers. And conceivably, somebody who has two to five space, parking spaces, might be able to do this relatively easy. So the next, in cost and complexity, is the village model. We limited this one to 15 vehicles maximum, or 15 individual shelters or vehicles. That, again, is the provider's choice. It can operate 24 hours with two staff onsite at all times. And in this model, it depends a lot on, the participants are selected if they will, if they can participate in the running of the place and be a little more community-minded if they're able to, to follow that kind of agreement. And so, what we've allowed in this one is for, for participants after training to actually be a part of the staff, a part of the oversight staff. And then the third model, low barrier model. This is arguably the best model and does the best job of providing services and transitioning people to permanent housing. It, it's kind of the preferred Cadillac model of shelters. The problem with it is there's a huge expense, there's a lot of regulation, and a lot of staff involved. An example of this would be the Arcata House Partnership. Currently, they're the only ones that have the resources and the staff to, to do one of these in Humboldt County. And obviously, they can't cover everything. They can't cover all 1,400 people. But I don't think any one shelter is going to be big enough to do that, so. Yeah, and that's characteristics of low, of the low barrier, hard service itself, caught a little more costly. There's requirements for data collection and monitoring of the participants, there's case, like more active case management of the people that are participating. It also is required to accommodate pets, partners, and possessions of the participants, and follows housing-first harm reduction philosophy. Now, those aspects actually are recommended for all the sites. They're, one of the things that makes these shelters work, the allowance of pets, partners, and certain possessions. But along with that, obviously comes some site requirements, and more money and more staff. So although they're recommended in the other two management plans, they're not required. Hopefully, that gives you a little idea about what that, what management plans do. Then I want to go back, finally, to, sorry about the head spinning slide movement. There, we did find one correction that needs to be made. It's in the Planning Commission Resolution, after, it's on, in the same file as the staff And there's a date, an incorrect date there. It says that, on page seven, it says the Planning Commission meeting was on February 3rd, and that's, needs to be corrected to March 17th, just a note on that. And then a final note, we did get some comments from Department of Environmental Health. They are suggesting some language that, that helps them coordinate with, with our department on these things. They would like to be, have a referral, basically. And we're just going to, we recommend actually that we just take their language and write it into the code. And I do have, if, I don't know, should I bring that up, Mike, what do you think, or?
Yeah, well, we can just explain it on the mic, I think. What the Division of Environmental Health is suggesting is they are identifying what's involved with an approved sewage disposal system. They provide some background information, and that'll be helpful for our checklists. It doesn't need to be in the ordinance. But then they do have actually a, an addition to the ordinance, and if I could, if you could stop sharing your screen, Mary, I'll, I'll pull up mine.
Sure.
And I can just briefly show the Commission what the, what the Division of Environmental Health is suggesting we add to the, to the ordinance. It's under section 61.05.5, under the operating standards. They want to say, they want to add this additional standard that says if the site allows recreational vehicles, that no disposal of sewage from recreational vehicles is permitted at the site unless the provider documents the North Coast Regional Water Quality Control Board has approved the sewage disposal system for that use, and details of the sewage disposal system are included in its management plan. And so that was just kind of a late addition that the Division of Environmental Health is recommending, and we're recommending that as well. So that's, that's the end of our presentation, and we're open for questions, answering questions or comments, and listening to what the public thinks.
All right. Brian, I saw your hand go up first.
The, the table that you showed several times with the different types of management plan, I was not able to follow your explanation for the bottom row. It said six months, six months, and I think manager's discretion. Could you repeat what that meant, please?
Sure. I can bring it up again, or I can just tell you. Six months is the, there's a maximum length of stay that we're allowed to set. And actually, it's partially set in the emergency shelter definition, in the state's definition of emergency shelter. So it's a six-month stay for any particular participant in the, in the minimal requirements or the village model management plans. And in the low barrier management plan, because it's a different state-created entity, that particular type of shelter does not have a six-month limit. So because it has really intensive staff, and sometimes they're dealing with things that take longer than six months to resolve, basically. So in that one, because, because it is so heavily regulated, there is no length of stay on there. The provider basically will decide how, what the length of stay is on that one. Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
All right. Noah?
Oh, I'm not sure. Go ahead, Peggy.
So, I found that the point in time count is probably seriously undercounting, you know, the extent of the problem, especially in the rural areas. I just wanted to point that out. I know there's a homeless camp behind my house, and it wasn't on there. But I have some issues that I wanted to bring up with churches, because a lot of the churches are embedded within residential areas. And so I feel like if you're going to create one of these sites in a residential church area, that there should be adequate public notice and a public hearing and, and hear the concerns, because I just think that that's important. And if they're going to be in retail areas, I don't know if that's a concern, because I didn't really hear that, but I know in Eureka, there was a lot of discussion when they decided to put a site right in downtown Eureka. I think there should be public input and concern, some, you know, maybe the community totally supports a site next door to their homes, but, or their retail business, but I think at least they need to be heard. I would like to see some sites that are exclusive for women and children who are vulnerable. There's often domestic violence, and people need emergency housing and, and, you know, like today, until they can find something more permanent. And I know in other communities, they've created sites that are exclusive to women and children that are fenced in and provide some security to those inhabitants. I also think that if you're going to be in a residential area, there should be some sort of curfew for entering the site unless it's, you know, a supervised emergency entry, you know, where someone comes in, but I don't think people should be able to come in all hours of the night and day if you're in a residential area. A lot of people that are in some of these sites do have substance abuse issues or other issues, and they may not respect the fact that they're in a residential area. So I think these are areas that need to be covered in an ordinance if they're not already in there. I did read through it quickly, but those are some of my concerns. I totally support providing sites for homeless. I've done a lot of studying on this myself, and read some of the models that are in the Oregon Salem area and Seattle, and, and I think they can be effective, but I think they also have to blend in with the areas where they, they're staged.
I'd like to answer that through the chair, I think.
Go ahead.
So, the church, the noticing hearing required for a church, that's something we can consider, I think. Also, the pit count being an undercount, that pretty much everyone I talked to concurs on that. From having done the pit count, that particular pit count, I think also that it was an undercount. So as far as the retail areas, the way state law, there are two reasons where, why we did this the way we did. And one is that state law limits us on what we can, they require that we designate an area, a zone or zones where these things are principally permitted, which means without the public hearing and comment. However, you will notice, if you look in the, each management plan requires that there be neighborhood outreach and a neighborhood engagement plan, ongoing neighborhood engagement. And just for an example, Arcata House Partnership has a, I think it's a, every six months, they have a meeting with any stakeholders that want to show up to hear concerns, problems. So that is baked in, rather than being baked in the ordinance, which the state regulations are not going to let us do specifically, and I'll show you why in a minute. We've actually baked a lot of those controls into the management plans. In other words, we ask that the provider lay out exactly what they're going to do, sign on the line, and then they're accountable for that management plan. And they can change it. I mean, they decide that they have to do it, basically. But I, I think that is one way that could, that notice that, of the neighbors would be addressed in this thing. The specific, the specific women and children or family versions of these, again, that is going to be something that will be allowed in the management plans. In other words, if a provider said this particular shelter is going to be women and children only, they put that in their management plan, and that's what it is. They, they set the specifics of how they are going to select their participants. The management plans also have a written agreement with each participant that has, you know, basically the rules set by the provider that they're accountable for. And then as to the idea of a curfew, this is a concern in all these things, site access, who can come in and come out. Again, in the management plan, there are quiet hours. The site access is going to be basically set up by the provider. They'll say, here are the hours of operation, here's the quiet hours. These are the hours where people can come in and out, here's who can come in and out, and there's onsite staff that's going to be accountable for keeping track of who comes in and out of the site. And again, that's baked into the management plan, rather than in the ordinance for the, for the reason, the planning law. for the reason, the planning law, reason that I showed. So hopefully that.
I just have a question about understanding the manager, I, I would understand what a management plan is, but who, who do they submit this management plan to and who enforces it?
Management plan is on file with the planning, when they get their zoning clearance permit, they have to file, as part of that, the plan is submitted. And it also has to be available in their outreach to, in a copy at the site so people can see it.
And so then the county then is the compliance officer for this?
It'll depend. It could be, depends on what the issue is. It could be county, it could be the sheriff.
Ultimately, it would be the county to enforce it. The zoning clearance certificate would be issued to an applicant. And if they're found not to be in compliance with their zoning clearance certificate, then they, they would be given the corrective actions that are needed to bring it into compliance. If they don't bring it into compliance, then there would be either a revocation process or some other enforcement process.
Because Arcata House Partnership is, this is what they do, and so we know that they're gonna do a good job, but others may not be as professional or, you know, they provide social services, they have a full variety of program services that they provide. So they're the cream of the crop, but, you know, others may not do as good a job. And so there needs to be an off-ramp if they don't, especially when they're in residential areas. That's my concern more than anything else.
So you're, you're raising a really, really good point that we, we've struggled with and, and that it's appropriate for the commission to struggle with in terms of the fact that there are some limitations, as, as Ms. Mulder mentioned, in terms of what the state allows us to regulate. So we're identifying areas where these could be permitted and they're required to be permitted with a ministerial permit, means somebody comes in, says, look, I comply with the law, and so give me a zoning clearance certificate, and then they're free to go. And, and, and so if, if you don't feel like there's sufficient restrictions in the area or if there's not sufficient performance criteria, those are things that really we, we should absolutely be talking about. And wanna make sure that you understand the, the rub that we kinda have trying to operate and implement the state law, because we can't just say no and we can't make it discretionary.
Go ahead, Noah, and then Mike.
Thanks. I have other comments, which I'm gonna hold off until after we've heard public comment, but just on this discussion that we've just been having and the director's last comment. One of my questions was, I understand the balance that, you know, you're trying to enable this to be principally permitted as a ministerial matter, but would it be possible for this ordinance to include provisions that, under certain circumstances, or say, in certain other zones that are not specified here, these activities could take place with a conditional use permit? Is that a, a mechanism that we could use?
Michael, I'm gonna defer to you on this.
Yeah, and the answer is yes. The way that we've set up this particular ordinance is to identify an alternative for your planning commission, which would allow for, for these, these types of facilities on existing church sites. And that would be as a principally permitted use. And I understand that you're concerned about that because a lot of these churches are in residential areas and so you may feel that that's not appropriate. But there is an allowance through our zoning ordinance for any church site to expand their, their, their facilities. And that is, would typically be done in a residential zone through a conditional use permit or a special permit process. And so that is an allowance for an existing church. If they wanted to formally set up one of these sites, they could seek a, a special permit for, for one of these facilities on their site through the expansion of a non-conforming use on, on their property.
So, Michael, could you explain limitations relative to state law and shelter crisis regulations? Can we require discretionary permits for those, apart from the church?
Yeah, we've, what the state law requires is that we identify sites where emergency shelters are principally permitted, no discretionary permit required. And that, the number of sites that we identify has to be sufficient in order to accommodate the need. And we believe that the commercial zones and the mixed-use zones and the multifamily R3 zone where they are principally permitted meet the requirements of state law. There are other zone, other zones that would, with a conditional use permit, allow emergency shelters as well. And, and that's allowable through, under state law, because we've already got enough sites that are allowed through a principally permitted structure. And, and so these other conditionally permitted allowances are kind of icing on the cake.
Mike, you've been had.
Yes, thanks, Chair. I have a couple of questions. I wanted to know from staff, what, a simplified version of what is the alternative one and alternative two? What, in simple words, is the difference between those two alternatives?
Yeah, I, I can quickly explain that. The alternative one is simply suggesting that if the planning commission so desires, they could recommend that the board of supervisors give themselves an allowance to, to extend the life of these zoning clearance certificates for these safe parking facilities. That, that alternative stands on its own and it, it doesn't have any relation to alternative two. Alternative two sets up a, an allowance, and this gets to something that Peggy was talking about, Commissioner O'Neill, earlier. It sets up an allowance for these facilities to be allowed as principally permitted on, on sites with an existing church. And so these, these alternatives are not related to each other. The first one is just extension of those zoning clearance certificates. And then the second one would just deal with existing churches. And it would be an extension of somewhat, a, a, a large expansion of the potential sites that could be used for these facilities.
So that brings me to part B on that same question. Alternative one is, looks like it places a limit on the number of safe parking and safe shelter sites at ten?
No, that, I'm sorry, that, that limit is not associated with the alternative language. The alternative is intended to be framed by that box that occurs on page twenty-three, and there's another one that also occurs in the inland ordinance. The ordinance on page twenty-three is the coastal version of the ordinance.
So there's a limit of ten sites with this?
That's right. There's, there's a limit of ten sites and that's intended to be county-wide.
County-wide. And is that for only county-owned land or leased?
No, this would be, this would allow facilities on privately held land.
So it, it, the state of California allows that? Is that what you're saying?
In fact, they require, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Melanie, then Brian Thomas.
Thank you. I'm looking for a little bit more information regarding the ability of operators to limit the people staying there to, for example, women and children. So would that be in compliance with state law? Would our operators be allowed to basically turn away certain people because they don't meet their, their roles? Because I, I agree with Commissioner O'Neill that we should have some that are available to women and children. And then my second question is on churches. It's remarkably easy to set up a church. And so when you say existing churches, those are churches that exist now as of, for example, this day and not future churches? And does it include all of the kind of alternative churches that may exist in places that, you know, that aren't obviously churches, like people's homes?
Oh, that's, that's a great question. Through the chair, would you like me to answer that or would you like me to respond to?
Go ahead.
Okay. As far as the establishing a limit or a requirement that all of these facilities be serve just a targeted population, we, we can't do that. What we can do is to be permissive and, and allow for the providers to pick and choose what types of subpopulations they would like to accommodate on their own particular site. And so some of them may wish to allow only women and children at their facilities, but we, we can't say in our ordinance that, that that would be, that only women and children facilities are allowed by this ordinance.
I have something to add there. It is kind of a complex issue and it has to do with other regulations besides ours. And how that works is, for instance, the low-barrier-type shelters are required, they have site selection, basically a legal scheme. And there are only certain reasons why you can select or deselect people. But it happens that it, it is allowable to have, to select families or women and children as one of the, it can't be, say, you can't disadvantage a particular group, but one of the allowed selection criteria is veteran status, women and children. And this is, this falls under the, the institutional code, WIC, I can't remember the name of it right now, but there, so some shelters, depending on their grant funding, anything grant, with state grant funding, has to follow that very strict plan. But on the other end of the spectrum, say churches, would, they have kind of free rein to use whatever selection criteria they see fit. And this, this would be nonprofits and presumably they would have nondiscriminatory practices. But that's kinda how it works. It varies with what your grant funding source is.
Thank you. And then regarding the churches, for example, there are some churches that are in our homes, basically, and some of them are on TPZ land, for example, or Ag land. And so when you give us the alternative two, is that inclusive of those churches? And if yes, are there zoning limits that would still apply in that case? Or would any church anywhere be allowable?
The way we're setting it up in the alternative is to be fairly expansive and, and allow any church with a verified congregation of twenty persons to qualify to host one of these facilities.
So someone's church in their home and, on TPZ land would be allowed?
The way it's currently structured, I believe that's true. That, that's a concern to the commission. It may be something we'll wanna take a little bit more of a look at, because I think we're envisioning probably more of the church facility than you're using an appropriate definition of a church. And the church is the people, not necessarily the facility.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
A couple of points I'd like to make. Number one, there are fathers with children who are subject to domestic violence, both in same-sex couples or just mixed-sex couples, where the father and the children are escaping the abuse. So I would like the language to be a little more gender-inclusive if we go towards the escaping domestic violence route. In addition to that, I'm wondering if we have the opportunity to see a map? If we have a GIS guru here who can show us these, this list of principally permitted zones? Like, what does that look like on a map? If we put all the C1, C2, C3, mixed-use urban, mixed-use rural, and the industrial, can we see that or?
Yeah, through the chair, if you like. I can bring up my screen.
Go ahead.
Okay, this is showing our web GIS and the parcels that have a green shading are identified as parcels that, right now, principally permit emergency shelters.
Michael, why don't you describe where that's at?
And, and so this is in McKinleyville. This is the McKinleyville Town Center property. The front part of it is zoned commercial and the back part of it is zoned multifamily. And so it qualifies right now as an emergency shelter site and it could, under this new ordinance, be used for, for safe parking facilities. And so you'll see a lot of McKinleyville, along this Central Avenue corridor is zoned commercial. And so there are many, many sites in McKinleyville that would accommodate that, use, allow these new facilities. There's also commercial zoning, basically in areas that have public water and sewer. Willow Creek is an exception. They don't have any sewer. They do have public water, but there are commercial zones in, in Willow Creek. And then Eureka, obviously, outside of Eureka, Redway, Garberville, there's a couple of sites in Weot. And along the avenue of the Giants is another place where you might see these developed.
Well, if I can just add a comment to that, you know, the last time I looked, McKinleyville held approximately sixty-five to seventy percent of the available land available for low-income housing development. And I know they're trying to catch up with being able to provide services, but still, Eureka is the place where most of the Health and Human Services offices locate their, their services. And so I'm wondering, could we potentially place, within that limitation of ten, like by community, we're not gonna end up with nine in McKinleyville and one in Southern Humboldt? I mean, not, not only is that potentially have significant impacts on that one community, but also, like we saw on the map, this problem is widespread. And so we need to make sure that there are opportunities throughout the county and not just solely in McKinleyville.
I agree. And I feel like, I don't know, I live in McKinleyville, maybe I have a conflict here and I'm not against homeless housing. That's what I do for a living, but it looks like you're just gonna pick on one area and say, hey, everybody, let's move out of Eureka, head to McKinleyville. And I don't feel like the services are there to support. So I think there should be sites all over the county and not so many in one area. And I don't know if the whole community of McKinleyville has looked at that map and agrees.
So this is for staff. Under alternative two, I see that there, existing church with a minimum verified congregation of twenty persons. I'm really curious of what that verification process is. Is it twenty persons that just signed up? Is it twenty persons that have been there for twelve months, at least twelve months or, and then also? Or, and then also, what is the definition of existing? Because in the county, I've seen some, you know, places that were churches that it would be really sad for someone to use that clause of 20 persons and then have, you know, devalue private landowners in residential neighborhoods.
Thanks. Michael, if I don't get this entirely right, please add in. But I think the very things that you're identifying as being concerned is what this is trying to address. And maybe this isn't the right mix of words quite yet. But the concern is, is that, you know, churches by mission have this, feel this obligation. So we don't want to regulate them out of doing something they feel called to do. On the other hand, we don't want people to take advantage of the title church and do something where, you know, maybe it would be a detriment to the community. And so what we're trying to grapple with is what is a functioning community of a church that would want to sponsor such a thing? And maybe this isn't the right definition of it, but that's really what we're trying to grapple with.
I think if we just really understood what verification meant and what those terms existing meant, I think it would help get to a clear consensus. In my mind, I would, I would think that'd be something somewhere around like a year of 20 people or more congregating. I think that would be fair. That's just off the top of my head. But if we hone in on those definitions, I think we could, I would be in support of that.
All right. Let's try and get the public input and then come back. Remember those people? We've been going pretty long on this. So let's open this up for public comment and keep, we're going to hold it to the three minutes. Raise your hand, please. The first one is Tanya Horlick. Go ahead, Tanya. Star six.
Oh, thank you. I'm on Zoom. Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you all for honoring our community by holding this discussion. I'm really impressed with the work of the County Planning Department. And I just have one question. I'm wondering why, I must have missed it, I'm sorry, it's a clarification question. Why is this limited to, did I hear 10 sites in the entire county? Because I ask this question because, like, if I was driving down a road and the road is a public service for all entities that are crossing and traveling, we don't limit how many cars go down that road. And I don't understand if this is a public service to the community, why it would be limited to 10 sites across the county? And thank you very much for this time.
Thank you. You want to address that one, Director?
Perhaps you could take all the public comment.
I would, but there's no other hands up, so that's...
So one of the things that, in this conversation, I wanted to remind the commission of. First, I'll answer the question directly. 10 is perhaps an arbitrary number. But this is also a pilot program for 18 months. It's really, let's see what can happen. Let's see what the interest is. Let's see whether or not this set of regulations work. And so it is intended to be kind of at a smaller scale, a management scale, to allow us to have this test. And then if we need to modify the regulations, create a better distribution, do something differently in the next iteration, it allows us to go in that direction.
All right. Thank you, Director. I see a couple more hands just came up. So 38, 37, go ahead.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, this is Janelle Aker. I am, there's a lot to this. It's a big issue. Thank you for the, it's wonderful to hear so much interest. I also am concerned about the number of sites and the limited number of participants. You heard about how many homeless there are and, you know, 10 sites by the number of occupants, does it even come close? I also want to address some of the concerns about having this here or having that there. I have, in my neighborhood, well, across the gully for me is, for, for quite a while, we, my husband and I, we would hear this couple screaming and yelling at each other. And we were kind of wondering what was going on, what was going on. And then after a while, it only became her. And I think what was happening is that she was, she is more easily agitated. She did, and she yells and screams. But I think that they have gotten some help and they're no longer yelling at each other. But every once in a while, we will hear her having a moment and she is just screaming, yelling. It's hard to say what she's, you know, what she's saying. So that, you can't, and I can't go over and have her evicted from her house because she is having an emotional issue, problem, and she needs to yell at a certain point and be calmed down. So I want to, I just want you to kind of think and have sort of a heart for all these people that are out there on the street and in the bushes and in your back, you know, in your field or whatever they are. And not, and sort of kind of let go of that. I was at the sleeping sites every morning that they were open in Eureka. A wide range of people were there. It wasn't limited to, you know, by gender. It wasn't limited by income. It wasn't limited by whether or not you had been at Betty Chin's and then came there. It wasn't limited in any way. It was just a place to, to sleep at that, you know? And this is so wonderful to open a place where people can actually, that's actually part of my problem. Some of these are just sleeping sites. And people need a place to live. And am I out of time? Sorry. And so I would encourage you to, to open up your mind and think about these in terms of places to live rather than these sleeping sites. I realize there's a lot of rules and regulations you need to deal with, but I think some of those can be worked around. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller is Sarah.
Hi.
Hi.
First, I want to start off by thanking staff. I think what's proposed is making steps in the right direction. And I really appreciate how much time and thought was put into all of the outreach to community members working on this issue. And I just really appreciate all of the details and time that went into this proposal. I also want to say outright, I support this proposal. And I have a couple of comments related to it and how I think it could be improved. Generally, big picture, I think we should loosen restrictions on these type of operations whenever possible. Like, this is a critical need and we need to make it possible for people to operate these sites. People need places to go and their needs are valid. Their needs are as valid as homeowners in residential neighborhoods. So with that, I think that the duration should be extended, if possible, to at least two years. The permitting is going to take time. And by the time an organization gets one of these sites off the ground, it's going to be at least six months into this 18th month process. So extending the time would be fantastic to allow these programs a true chance to operate and fix the bugs and prove themselves before we consider canceling them or renewing them. If not that, I encourage you, at a minimum, to adopt alternative one, allowing for the board supervisors to do the extension. Looking at applicability, I think it would be better to allow any site in the county that meets the specified requirements laid out. I think staff did a great job really honing in on what a site would need to provide these services regardless of location. But barring, barring that, I think that adopting alternative two, which includes existing churches, and personally, if a church is a church, it doesn't really matter how many members it has. If they want to provide those services, they should be able to. I don't think we're going to see many cases of residential house in a TPZ zone providing these services. It's going to be facilities.
30 seconds.
Okay, thank you. And then finally, the number of sites. I want to echo the previous commentators that 10 sites is not a lot, particularly considering the need. If you look at like 10 sites and I think it was 15 to 20, 20 spots in that, that is not even a fraction of the need in the county. And it doesn't really clarify, is it first come, first served? Is it 10 applications?
Your time's up. Your time's up, ma'am. Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak on this topic? Desi Wade. Star six.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I've spoken to the planning commission before about these ideas and I'm really very pleased and grateful to all of the hard work that I know the planners have put into creating these ordinances and trying to come up with a framework that would allow what we've been advocating for for almost 10 years now. That's a long time. The last two speakers, I want to, I want to reiterate the need for having more flexibility in the timeframe. I have some questions seriously about if you start with 10 people and/or 15 people and people are going to, for sometimes just be, that place will be a touchstone for them to go on and find something that's better or more stable. These are stabilizing opportunities for people. Some people are going to take longer than others. But as one moves on, how do you incorporate another and then give them the time that they need as your time is, you know, going away in the limitations? There needs to be more flexibility. If you really want to care for people, you have to take all these things into consideration. The other thing is, in terms of only having 10 sites, I have some concern about how is that going to happen for providers? Are the sites going to be, how are they going to be determined or selected? Is it going to be first come, first served? Who comes up with the first 10? And if that's all one provider or just a couple of providers, is there going to be some opportunity there or some way of creating or allowing for the opportunity to be opened up for people to get their ducks in a row, to be able to get through the permitting process and all of that? I just, I'm very grateful. I'm very grateful that we're here and we're having this conversation because though we will only be able to do 150 people in one site, in 18 months, losing three people a month to the streets, we're going to lose 80 people. This is critical. And as the moratoriums end and more people become dislocated and because of climate refugees, all the things that we've talked so much about, we are going to be impacted in a way that we really need to really start thinking of how we move people off the streets, give them opportunities because they need some choice. And we need to be able to be flexible enough to actually work together and collaborate to move people along into communities. And if we are not moving...
30 seconds.
We aren't going to be able to do that. I really want to just say thank you. I know there's a lot of things to resolve. I would love the alternatives for being able to have churches be able to provide these and for people to have, you know, lots of alternatives as much as possible. So thank you. Thank you for all your hard work, commissioners. I know you have heart. I see it in you in the decisions that you make and the discussions that you have.
Okay, your time's up. Thank you. Thank you. Now the hands are coming up. 7429, go ahead.
Good evening. This is Roby Tenorio. I'm also very grateful that something this important is before you. It sounds like there's details that need to be worked out, but we desperately need it. We need it very soon in Southern Humboldt. And thank you again for spending time on this tonight. And thank you to the staff for bringing this such an important issue forward. Good night.
Thank you. Next caller is Tony Girard. Okay. Can we do that easy enough? So you'll have to promote to a panelist when you're asked.
Can you hear me okay?
Yep. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Tony Girard. I am the outreach coordinator for the Church of the Joyful Healer in McKinleyville. And I appreciate the, again, like everyone has said, all the work that has gone into this. The church has been doing outreach to the unhoused and food insecure in McKinleyville for almost six years. And I used to have a different heart when it came to unhoused people. I was very judgmental and not in my backyard. And that is, I have changed because of my faith. And more importantly, my experience with building relationships with these folks that are out on the street. And I am in strong support of these alternatives, of doing something different that has been done in the county, relaxing the regulations to make it easier to help the folks that the providers are so desperately trying to help. I really appreciate the, the opportunity to give input. And again, I just, I can't say strongly enough how, how much the Church of the Joyful Healer supports this. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment and bring this back to the commission. We're at about 9:10, so, okay, go ahead, Brian.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. One thing that came up in the written public testimony had to do with whether or not the parking lots had to be paved or not. And if they were unpaved parking lots, what that would mean in terms of tribes being able to comment on the potential for, you know, sacred sites being in those, you know, unofficial unpaved parking areas? And if it's, if it's just sort of a nondiscretionary permit, how would the tribes have the opportunity to comment and, and point out those potential issues that come up? Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Thomas, you had your hand up as well. I don't, do you want to take that one, Director?
I can probably take a shot at it through the chair.
Whichever. Go ahead, Mary.
Well, part of this whole thing is to, the providers are obligated to contact interested parties, which would be neighbors. In the case, I wonder if we could incorporate an informal travel consult in our neighborhood outreach plan as part of that.
What you would get is a tip of concurrence from each of the tribes if you're in their area?
Well, I think the question is, is that if there's no real ground disturbance going on, is, is there a need for concurrence? And normally, when we're going through a ministerial process, there's not a referral process. That's something that people would come in and demonstrate that they're in compliance and they would then be able to get the clearance. I, I think that that's something we're still struggling with even tonight. We got the comments from DEH or DHHS looking for a referral process. But the balance here is that if there's a referral process, it's just going to make it more complicated to issue these permits. And, and so if there's no ground disturbance and it's on a lot paved is clear, but if it's gravelled, there's no grading going on, there's no earth moving going on, I, I wonder, maybe we should have a discussion with the tribes before we get to a place where we're taking this forward for a final action. But I, I wonder if the tribes would want then to participate in that? If, if there's... Then to participate in that, if, if there's no earth disturbance.
You would have to ask the tippos.
Right.
Especially, I mean, Eureka, I mean, there's a lot of places that, that you think, you wouldn't think that they're sacred, but they are.
Understood.
Go ahead, Thomas.
So, um, I heard a lot of comments of people questioning the ten, starting off ten, but I. I would really like to remind everyone, it's a pilot thing, so let's say. It doesn't work out and in eighteen months we have to withdraw it, I think if there's only ten sites, let's make sure. It works well, so that way we aren't in potentially losing a bunch more. Um, I also would assume it's an ordinance, so if we get twelve months down the road and it's working really good, it could probably be amended as well, but. I don't know, that's, that's kind of where I'm at is, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of the ten and I'd like to see definitions around the church, that alternative too.
All right, Noah, you have a comment?
Um, okay, well, I, I guess I have a somewhat different view, but it is a view that is echoing what some of the public commenters said. Um, my view is that, given that this is a pilot project, given that it is time limited to eighteen months, or even if we were to. Expand that to, to years, which I think would be reasonable. Um, I, I think we ought to remove, or we ought to lower the barriers to entry as much as possible, so that we could. Get more examples of this happening on the ground, even at the risk of some of them occurring in places or in ways that do cause some. Impacts or problems, um, so that we can. Learn from this experience and perhaps put more limitations in place later. I mean, I, I guess, so, to take three or four examples of limitations that I think are questionable. I mean, we've discussed the church thing already, but for my money, I, I would like to see any church as being an allowed site and I think it's. Sort of weird and awkward to have the planning staff be verifying that the current congregation is twenty people or more, I just feel like if it's a church. Let's let it be used, um, but, you know, conceivably allowing it in other zoning areas. Um, I would at least like to have a discussion of whether there might be other zones that could be appropriate. Um, removing the limitation on only twenty sites because. Well, the other, the other point is that each of these plans, each of these projects is going to have a management plan that will. Define the, 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 the project more precisely, so. Twenty sites may be a reasonable limit for many of these sites, but not necessarily all. So I just feel like why have it be limited to twenty sites, and I mean, individual sites within the site, not ten sites, um, in the whole county. And finally, the requirement that, uh, that it be not allowed for overnight, or sorry, that it be limited to overnight only and not allowed for twenty-four hours. Seems problematic to me as well, and that was something that was reflected by some of the comments that I read. Um, so in short, I guess what I'm saying is, I would really like us, for the purposes of this pilot prob, project. To lower the restrictions as much as possible, see what happens and see if we have to add in some of those restrictions afterwards. Thank you.
Go ahead, Melanie.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Levy, I, I agree with a lot of that in terms of collection of data, it's important to have a good interval. Where we can actually learn from the experience. Um, I still would like to limit the churches to the zones that are currently listed. Just to avoid, I mean, having them in places where we may not be able to access the site. Um, you know, the, just, you know, wildlife reasons, uh, water quality. Um, all of the same reasons that we talk about in terms of other projects in fact, and so, uh, I just want to add that, thanks.
Any other thoughts? I have one. Um, I agree with just about everything that's been said, my only suggestion would be that we don't. Do it for as long as what's being asked, the eighteen months, I think we should do it for six months, that gets us through the winter, which is generally what the big concern is. And it will, will know if things are, need to be changed sooner, I think it, it, um. If we let it go on too long, things, even if they're not working, are going to get established in certain areas or in certain places and then we're going to be locked into them where I think if we do it for a shorter duration, we're going to find out. If it works or it doesn't, if it works in that neighborhood, if it works in this one. Um, if, if the program in general works, so I just, I think a shorter duration, for the first go around at least. Um, would be better. Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Chair, um, I, I too am in favor of this, um, I'm looking at though. I like alternative one, which limits it to eighteen months, but with the discretion of the supervisors to extend it. Um, for a length of time, seeing it going. When you put something for like only six months, it's hard to get funding and get that all set up, uh, is the problem on that. Alan, um, it's very hard. For, because these are going to be managed sites. And they're going to be limited to twenty at each site. Um, twenty vehicles, tents, sleeping cabins. Um, with those three different management plans, um, are. It's going to take a little setup, so, uh, we're not going to be seeing this. Um, for just emergency shelters for winter, uh, we're looking at doing this right now in the summertime, once it gets set up. And it would be good to go ahead and go with eighteen months. Um, I believe in my mind, I think this has been vetted very well, um, a lot of input was put here. Um, we'll give it a, a shot and I, I would like alternative one with the, uh. Uh, limit of eighteen months, um, unless it's, um, uh, extended.
Okay, any other thoughts?
Uh, if we did, uh, eighteen months, I mean, I've been presuming that it's eighteen months because we would get a data. Uh, collection of twelve months, presuming that it would probably take six months to. Really see these sites developed. But I just have a question in terms of the timeline, I guess, uh, if this were approved, could these be in place like tomorrow?
So, once the ordinance is effective, which will be thirty days after the board of supervisors' action. Um, yeah, they could be in place within a week.
All right, thank you.
Go ahead, Brian.
Um, I'm personally okay with the eighteen months, I still think that the tribal consultation issue needs to be addressed because one of the tribes reached out to us expressing that as a concern. Um, and I'd like to know what the others think, I think that's appropriate, especially in areas. You know, where there are sacred sites. Um, in addition to that, I really think that the, whatever the cap is, be it ten, twenty, fifteen. That we have a maximum per community planning area or maximum per. Something, so that it's not concentrated in, in just one or two communities.
Thomas?
So just for clarification, I guess, uh. I might be, my, I might have been looking at this differently, alternative one, if we went with alternative one, that would not include any church sites, is that correct or incorrect?
They're unrelated to each other, the two alternatives.
They're un, they're unrelated?
They're, they're both just an alternative to what's otherwise to the whole thing.
Okay.
It's not one or, or two.
Okay.
One or not and two one.
Okay, so if we approved one, it would, like, church sites wouldn't be able, unless they went to.
We have to make a separate.
Okay.
All right. Well.
I just want to clarify something I said earlier, I'm not opposed to them being in churches, I just feel that if you're in a residential area, there should be. Some outreach to your neighbors to make sure everyone's good with this, because if it springs up tomorrow. And you, you might have had some valid input that you want to provide and I think as a homeowner. You should have that right to be able to have that input into any type of new facility that's coming to town that wasn't in the zone before.
I share your concerns.
I, I personally believe that if we look at the management plans, uh, there is that outreach there. Uh, if we could have Michael or Mary in on that.
Yes, actually, I can answer that. Um, yeah, it's a requirement of the management plan that outreach in the neighborhood is done. So there is a, a different process, it's made by the provider. There's, um, the sharing of the management plan is one, the. Um, bringing in the local authorities, like the sheriff has to be involved and know what's happening. So, and a chance for the neighbors to weigh in on their concerns, so all of those are part of the management plans.
And I was looking at the low barrier model first, I guess, that's page fifty-two. Um. Are the other ones in here, I was just able to open that up right there.
I believe that provision is in all of them. All three management plans.
Yeah, but, that's right, and one thing that Mary said earlier that I want to circle back to is, she indicated that. An appropriate approach to involving tribes could be as part of that outreach program, that the provider. Take steps to outreach to the, to the applicable tribes, uh, rather than the, the planning department. Establishing a referral to the tribes and that, that would shorten the timeframe and minimize the bureaucracy involved with, um, that sort of a referral.
I think that's an option, but I think that the county needs to make sure that those management plans. Adhere to all these rules and that they're, you know, that the outreach was sufficient, so. I don't know how you do that, but to just say, I mean, I can write a plan, I can write all kinds of plans and that doesn't mean. Every, everything is okay, so someone, and I'm not saying that people. Are not reputable or that they would be dishonest or not, they just may not know. How to go about doing it, because you're going to be dealing with different groups, some groups are going to be better at it than others. Someone has to make sure that it happens and that's where the county, I think, would come in.
If I could, through the chair, put a comment on that. It seems to me the neighbors in would, you know, have the ultimate say, if they complain. Then.
I think, I think, Mary, if I could, the thing that's being articulated or, as a concern is that. If they reach out to the neighbors and even the neighbors are upset, there's no teeth to say that some change has to be made. And so I, I think the struggle here is, is there an ability to. Develop a set of regulations whereby there is the consultation with the neighborhood. That there is some kind of negotiation process or some kind of process whereby. People feel like their voice and their concerns are at least heard. Um. And, and I, if, if I capture the, um, concern correctly, I, I think that's what. I'm hearing that you're looking for is, is that it be more than a token effort.
Well, we saw that at the roundabout in Arcata, people feel like they weren't heard and, and they came back to the county and then you have to deal with it later, so if we do it right. From the beginning, then we won't have that problem.
And just, and just to add, I know you, you said you don't want a referral process, but the disposal of blackwater, you know, really seems like it has to have. Some agency who deals with that regularly, uh, have either very specific rules that. Can be followed or the ability to sign off, that, that just seems like common sense to me.
Noah?
Um, I wanted to ask about, and hopefully get a little clarity about one. One concern that I mentioned, which was the prohibition against, uh, twenty-four hour access. But I, I actually, I want to go back to, to Mary's, um, presentation, because I believe. In her presentation, she showed the three models. Um, being minimum requirements, village model or low barrier had. I, I think if I recall correctly, under village model and low barrier, it said. Uh, twenty-four hours could be allowed, uh, if the management plan permitted it and it was only minimum requirements. That said overnight access only, so, first of all, is, am I, is that correct? Okay, and I mean, I guess my general point or my question is, why? Why not allow the duration of time as in overnight or twenty-four hour access be determined. On a case by case basis according to the site, the capacity of the operator and so forth, why? Why limit certain categories of these sites to being overnight only, can you explain the? The, the reasons for that, because maybe there is a reason that I'm not understanding. Um, but it was something that, again, I, I got from a couple of the comments, people were saying, these need to not be limited to overnight only, so I would appreciate some clarity.
Yeah, I can take that through the chair. Um. The. Requirement for overnight only is really to accommodate. The need to eliminate for, for some, for a provider who has limited funds and an appropriate site. In other words, it'll take less staffing, it will be less expensive. That's really the only reason for.
But if, if I may jump in, why, why make that a requirement at the ordinance, why not allow them to limit it to overnight only if they should prefer? But allow them to make it twenty-four hours if they do have the capacity and wish to do so. We wouldn't be requiring that each of these have twenty-four hour access if we just allowed them to do that in their management plan if they wish to, does that make sense?
Yes, it does, and actually, there is no reason that couldn't be in there, it'd be. It could be, could be a choice, there's no requirement, there's no logical reason why, other than the cost, uh, that it couldn't be the choice of the provider.
Okay, thanks for that response.
All right. Could, Chair, go ahead, Mary, would you explain how the different options work? I mean, isn't it also within the ordinance that somebody could come up with their own, um, operations plan and submit that? So just what Commissioner Levy is, is asking could be something that somebody proposes?
Yes, in fact, the way we built the management plans, for clarity and ease for the providers, we included everything that's required by the ordinance. And in addition, we have best practices with choices. So that, uh, there are multiple places in there where, you know, there's choice A, B, and C or other. And there's nothing, there's no legal reason why a provider can't scrap our plans, honestly, and come up with their own. As long as it covers our, as long as they have our ordinance covered. The thought is, because we're a rural community and that kind of thing only happens when you have. Kind of a lot of resources, a lot of staff resources. Where the management plans are basically a frame, a pre-made, uh, framework. To make it easier for people, but they're not. Uh, a legal document that can't be varied from, does that answer your question?
Sure, yeah, I, I guess I just want to say, my overarching concern is that we try to allow the maximum flexibility in the ordinance. For different types of plans to come forward according to the. Individual needs and capacities of, of the project applicants, thanks.
Go ahead, Mike.
Well, I would think that, um, the overnight versus twenty-four, uh, you know, seven time. Means that they've got to have things more in place, they've got to have sanitation, because people will be staying there the whole time. As opposed to the low barrier, minimal, just getting in and having management during that overnight stay. Um, makes it less expensive to start off. Um, I would see that there could be a possibility of expanding. Uh, once that kind of gets started with possibly one of the providers that. Hey, they then see it's, it's working and they're doing good and, uh, maybe they've got some more money coming in to. To do that more and they could then advance their management model with more. Uh, things to have people on site than twenty-four, seven.
You also might have other uses during the day for that parking lot.
And that could be, yeah, that other side.
It doesn't jive with, you know, at night, it doesn't really matter.
I, I think the clarification. I think the clarification Commissioner Levy was seeking was just that those were suggested models and not hard and fast guidelines or regulations associated with each model.
That would be my preference, yeah, thanks.
All right. Any other questions, or somebody got a thought on making a motion on this? We're at nine-thirty-five, so...
I'll make the motion. I'd like to make the motion to make all the, to make all the required findings and find that proposed ordinances are exempt from CEQA. Recommend the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors adopt the Safe Parking, Safe Shelter, Pilot Ordinances and Attachments Two and Three of the inland and coastal areas. Reaffirm and continue by resolution the declaration of a shelter crisis in Humboldt County, and C adopt the Shelter Crisis Ordinance and Attachment Four for the unincorporated county pursuant to Government Code Section eighty-six, nine-eight-point-four, with the addition of the, is it the Blackwater Amendment that was brought forth here? And I would choose to have Alternative One with that eighteen-month sunset. That is automatic, but could be extended.
There were other thoughts that didn't get incorporated into that motion?
I was just going to ask specifically about Alternative Two, since we've had a discussion of that. Are you deliberately omitting that, that alternative? That's the one that would allow for churches of twenty people or more to do it.
I would be okay with that if the zoning was limited to the same zones that all of the other ones are limited to. So the C-one, C-two, C-three light industrial, multifamily, mixed-use...
Isn't that right in, Alternative Two?
I think if it was limited to those zones, those churches would already be eligible, is my understanding. This is, this is a way to expand it, correct me if I'm wrong, but this would expand it to churches in other zones.
I see, thank you.
And I personally support that. I don't know that everybody else does, but I'd like to see that included.
I'm just wondering from staff, how can we make sure that these are evenly distributed and don't impact certain communities that already bear a lot of the low-income housing and don't have the services to provide those residents?
Currently, this is simply to encourage these to occur. There's no limitations. And if the commission wanted to see the more evenly distributed part of the recommendation, part of the motion would be to include a limitation per community plan area or per community, or something like that.
Would the maker of the motion be amenable to something like that?
Yes, I would.
Thank you.
Could we limit the churches so, such that they wouldn't be allowable in TPZ and possibly PRIMAG?
That's reasonable as well.
Thank you.
But to be clear, you are allowing them in residential neighborhoods.
Were you going to require any kind of community input if it's in a residential area?
I believe that's part of the management plans already in all of this.
But the management plan is being written by the provider, so who's providing that oversight to ensure that it happens? We have people all the time coming in here going, "I just found out this is happening," or, "No one's really listening to what I've got to say." And if you're the provider that's, you know, responsible, you may or may not carry out that responsibility in a way that the county does, or at least could provide oversight over. So I just, I'm not saying that they shouldn't do it. I'm just saying, how do we ensure that it's done properly?
Yeah, maybe if they were even just posted on the county website or something like that, so people would be aware of them.
Thomas has been waiting.
So I'm stuck on this church one. It's, I'm just really confused by where we're at right now. It sounds like the motion on the table is to, in those right zonings, you would, it would allow at churches. Is that correct or incorrect?
Just to be clear, I think in those specified zonings, churches are just like any other nonprofit or government site. So it's, they're eligible to do it within those specified zonings. And the Alternative Two was about whether we allow churches to do it in other zones, at least some other zones.
Okay.
But that's not part of the motion, I don't think.
No, I understand that part, so I'm just, I'm trying to wrap my head around it.
Excluding TPZ and PRIMAG are now part of it.
I did hear that, thank you.
All right. So we have a motion. Do we have a second?
So just to be clear, we're, Alternative One, yes. Alternative Two, currently, no, for an eighteen-month pilot program with limitations per community plan area. Is that correct?
Yes.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. So, oh, Director?
I apologize. Could I get clarification? So Alternative Two is not included, or Alternative Two is included with limitations?
I heard it isn't.
It's included with limitations, excluding TPZ and PRIMAG.
And PRIMAG.
I don't think that's what Mike said.
Alternative One...
I mean, I'd be in favor of that, but, but the motion on the table excludes the whole church thing, if I'm not mistaken.
The extra.
Right, right, the, so...
CN, CG, ML.
But you said when we, Noah and I, or Commissioner Levy and I brought it up, that you would be okay with that as the maker of the motion, to include Alternative Two if we excluded TPZ and PRIMAG from that?
That's what I heard. And CN and CG and ML are which zones exactly, Director?
Commercial, industrial.
Yes, I would go with then adding that in, Alternative Two then, instead of One, because that's only difference...
Well, Alternative One you can leave in, independently of Alternative Two.
Okay.
What about Alternative In or Out?
In.
In with the...
With a limitation on TPZ.
With a limitation, no TPZ, no ADX.
And PRIMAG.
Okay. Well, thank you.
I will withdraw my second for the time being. Okay. Do we, does anybody else want to second the motion?
I'll second it.
All right, Thomas, discussion?
Verification and definition of existing, if that, if staff could, that, those are my hangups on supporting that, what verification is. And, I mean, I think that could be at staff's discretion, but it would be unfortunate for something that hasn't been utilized as a place of worship to pop up, that's legally been a place of worship, but all of a sudden, they have twenty members as of yesterday, and that's what I'd like to see not happen.
Well, could we set the date to today, existing as of today?
You could.
Existing as of today and has been using it with twenty members for the last twelve months, is that...
Or just twenty members of that congregation as of today's date?
I'd be supportive of that.
Yeah. We could do that. Add that in to the motion. As the definition.
Okay.
I just want to state for the record, I am not going to be able to support the motion. I very much am sympathetic and want to have a plan that works for our community. And I'm just, want to echo Commissioner O'Neill's concerns, that having the folks that are setting this up be the ones that are responsible for checking in with the neighborhood, checking in with the tribes, and checking to make sure it's all followed without some other process, makes me concerned to allow it to be essentially in any zone except for the two that you excluded. And so that's, that's my hesitation, and if we could work around that, I'd love to join in, because this is something I'm passionate about.
I think, yeah, I share your concerns, Commissioner Mitchell, and I think that the fact that it's a pilot is, you know, makes me feel a lot more comfortable about it.
If there could be some sort of sounding board, or, so Commissioner Mitchell, you're talking about having some sort of emphasis about the reach out on the management plan, and how to follow that up with?
Well, like the Director said, they might reach out, but there's no teeth to, if the whole community says, "No, this isn't a good place for XYZ, it floods, we already have a problem with crime, you know, these cars that are parking here might get broken into, the people might be assaulted." Like, there's all sorts of areas I can think of in McKinneyville already, that I don't think that a church would be appropriate in a residential area. And we won't be hearing the neighborhood's concerns. We're delegating, you know, the authority to others to respond, respect, and reflect that in their finished plans. And I just don't have the confidence that the community will be listened to.
Well, these would be churches existing as of today, right? Yeah.
Can you, I mean, I'm sympathetic to what you're saying, Commissioner Mitchell. Is there, is there a way of further constraining the allowance that Alternative Two would give these churches, that you can think of, that would, that would, you know, meet that concern, that would assuage that?
Nothing's come up yet. I've been searching and asking, but it hasn't yet.
Okay.
I'm going to take a wild run at something here that may or may not be appropriate. But one of the things we did with the cannabis ordinance two-point-oh is that we identified that if there was no opposition to the ministerial approval of cultivation site within a community plan area, that it could be done through just a simple special permit. And the reason for the special permit is that, and that verified, whether or not anybody had any concern. What if the management plan had to come in with more or less some kind of acknowledgement, consent from the neighbors, saying, "Yep, we're, we're good with this." And, and so if it's in a residential area, and the neighborhood's supportive of it, then it could be allowed. It gives the neighborhood a voice, there's accountability, there's a time to look at it.
So if the neighbors are opposed, then would there be a way for them to appeal for a conditional use permit, or some way that it could still be allowed to happen, but we would have a voice in the conditions and making sure that the community's needs were met?
I think, based upon what I heard earlier, yes, we could go down that path.
I could support that plan.
Okay, yeah, because I was actually going to suggest something much simpler, which is that we could conceivably allow it in these churches in other zones with a CUP or special permit only. And that, that's a, maybe a simpler way of...
That's a simpler way.
Of getting, ensuring that it would have those safeguards, so...
That would totally work.
Okay. Okay, well, I'd be okay with that.
Excellent, thank you.
Sure.
So... I'm with you.
Okay. Sure.
All right. So any more discussion on this? You cleared, Director, on, okay. With Trip, go ahead and ask the question.
Yes.
Peggy O'Neill?
Yes.
Noah Levy?
Yes.
Mike Newman?
Yes.
Alan Bonjo?
Yes.
Melanie McCavver?
Yes.
Thomas Mulder?
Yes.
All right. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, everyone. All right, well, we didn't get to everything on our agenda tonight. We still had the issues of planning commissioner seating and review of the map showing cannabis cultivation sites. And I would ask, if it's okay with the Director, that we're already at nine-fifty, that we agendize this for the next meeting, but put it at the very beginning. And I don't think it's going to take that long, and we'll get through it. And is that okay with everybody else? All right. Anything, anybody else wants to bring up before we adjourn?
This is the way you talk, we have to do it.
All right. We're adjourned. Thank you.